Okay, we will call to order this commission meeting, March 5th, 2025 at 2:06 PM. We start this meeting with a prayer reading or thought. Glenn Tanner is going to help us with that, and then Rudy Livingston will lead us in the pledge.
Join me in a prayer. Our dear Father in heaven, we're indeed grateful for the opportunity to come together as a community to discuss the safety and well-being of this community and the opportunities afforded to us, living in this great area. We pray that thy Spirit will be present, that we might be respectful, patient, and understanding one another, that we might be able to represent our feelings and beliefs in a way that would be kind and respectful to one another. We pray that you'll continue to guide us as to the things that will protect us and keep us safe, and be able to allow us these freedoms that we enjoy. In this, we pray in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Glenn.
Please join me in honoring our country and saluting our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Rudy. Okay, we will build our consent agenda. Is there any items of the nineteen consent items that you'd like to hold?
Just one recommendation from staff to continue number eight for one week.
Okay. Any others from the commissioners?
No.
None.
Okay. And on regular agenda, we have fourteen.
Grant-funded positions, we had the opportunity to be awarded, the opportunity to work on generational poverty in the county. And so, these are two new staff members that will be grant-funded on a temporary basis. And I just want to make that clear for some people have had concern that we're adding, adding a lot more people, but we actually were given the funds for this, and it'll be a good opportunity for us.
That's correct. Okay, so no need to hold seven.
Sorry.
You're good. That's great. Okay. And as far as closed goes, we'll hold fifteen, strike sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen.
As far as consent agenda items, we will continue number eight to the next commission meeting on March 12. On regular agenda items, we will hold number five, six, and eight, and strike number fourteen. As far as closed meetings, we will hold number fifteen and strike number sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen as stated.
Fantastic. Thank you. All right. Mr. Ralph Barnes, do you want to help us? Number five is the approve and authorize the setting of elected officials' officers' salaries.
Yes, Ralph Barnes, HR. So that item five is in, pursuant to, you know, Utah County ordinance, which provides a mechanism by which I can make a recommendation to the commission to increase elected officials' salaries. Salaries for elected officials are set annually, or they're set at an annual rate. And probably most importantly, we have an option of using either the average rate of the county attorney of our four largest counties in the state, or we can also use the average increase of, market increase of employees from the, from the previous year. In 2024, the average increase of market for employees was, you know, 2.7%. The increase of elected officials in the four largest counties in 2024 was, you know, 2%. You know, 2% is the recommendation, going with the lesser of the two. Now, with that being said, I do want to just add on to this, that as of the first of 2025, our comparative, you know, counties have all raised elected officials' salaries. And so now we're behind 6%. So that's just an important, you know, data point to be aware of. You know, bottom line is that the elected officials of Utah County, per our ordinance, are, can be, you know, recommended for that increase of, of, you know, 2%. And I'm happy to answer any other questions that you might have.
We may have some. For me, the last two years, I voted for this increase. I plan on voting for it again today, but I will donate mine back to one of our sister organizations. I see myself much different than Sheriff Smith, say, who has made a career being a post-certified law enforcement. So I know he, he's making this a career. I don't want to be a career politician. I'm here for service. And so, I watched a fellow commissioner take, vote no against this, and still let it go into his bank account. I'm still going to vote yes, but I have a problem with that. I think that's a little hypocritical. So that's my soapbox speech.
Yeah. I'll also be donating mine, but I'm voting no. I feel this will be the third year in a row that we have increased elected officials. I don't think it needs to be a race to the top. I don't care that other counties have raised their elected official salaries. All of us, we ran on the salary we're at or less, so I do not think that an increase is warranted. So while I will be voting no, I will also be donating it like Commissioner Gordon.
Yeah. I think that I need to clarify that being 6% behind all of our peers is not a race to the top, but rather a race to the bottom, and we continue to be a race to the bottom for the last thirty years. Like Commissioner Gordon, I recognize that the vast majority of our elected officials are career service employees. And if we want a well-run and efficient county, we need the most qualified and highly skilled people running as department heads for our county, which means we need to provide them competitive pay. And as he pointed out, Sheriff Smith, our recorder, our assessor, our treasurer, our surveyor, they're all career service employees, and I think that we should pull politics out of this. That's why years ago, we worked very hard to come up with a policy, and I think that it makes sense to keep politics out of it. I've got no problem donating my salary increase as well, as a, as a public servant who's not a career service employee, but I will absolutely be voting yes, because my peers deserve to be paid fairly for the work that they do. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve item number five.
Okay. And I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
That passes two to one. Item six now is our justice court judges. So same topic, different group of individuals.
Yeah, this one's a little unusual. The administrative office of the court sets the range for these roles. They're, of course, appointed by the commission, but retained by election. So they're very unique. So, you know, technically, they're elected, but again, we don't set their salary ranges. The requested increase is really just to keep them in the range where they should be, quite frankly. There are some options, but the increase we've recommended is to see that they don't fall behind within the range and amongst their peers, which we are still behind amongst their peers.
And do you have that percentage?
7.7%. Yeah, how it works with, just so, I'm happy to explain this. We are required by the office of the courts, even as they keep moving the range up, to at least give them the equivalent of what the employees got the previous year as an average increase, which is 2.7. At the same time, they move the range by 5%. Thus, 7.7. Very simple, just trying to maintain, you know, the position in the range. So they're not getting ahead in the range, quite frankly, but they're just maintaining their position in the range.
Okay.
As opposed to falling closer to the starting rate.
How many individuals are here? And then, this is my first question. And then the second is, I believe we've budgeted for this.
Yes. Oh, you know, thanks for asking that. So we have, you know, two, you know, justice court judges. And yes, we do have in restricted funds, funds, you know, sufficient for these increases. It just has to be approved by the commission to release.
Okay. Questions up here?
No.
I'll make a motion to approve item number six.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, that passes. And then item eight, approve and authorize market-based cost of labor increase for the employees of Utah County.
Okay, so why aren't we asked, why aren't we talking about COLAs? And I think this is an important, you know, distinction. We are talking about, even though we can call it a COLA, it's really not a cost of living increase. The recommendations we give from the HR office are based upon the cost of labor, labor. There can be scenarios, which you're sure, I'm sure you're aware of, where the cost of living is going up and the cost of labor is not, or vice versa. We're in a scenario where they are both going up, and as you are aware, the cost of living is now going back up. It's got as low as two and a half now. It's up at three as of today. So, but that's not the basis. The basis is that the cost of labor is outpacing the cost of living. So what we care about is competing in the labor market for our talent. And, you know, to be frank, if the cost of labor was not going up, but the cost of living was, I would not, I would not recommend an increase. I don't, that's just, I mean, it doesn't mean we wouldn't do it, but I wouldn't recommend it. Again, you know, CPI is, you know, 3% as of, as of today, the forecast was, you know, two and a half percent for 2025. It'd be super easy if we based these increases on, on the cost of living. It's a super easy number to get. It's all over the place. And interestingly enough, it's the same number, two and a half percent. That is really a coincidence. It's, the recommendation is really, you know, based upon the fact of, of, you know, two things. We have limited funds. We have, you know, 5% of funds set aside for wages for these sort of increases for 2025. Now, I could probably make an argument to go 5%. Let's do the whole thing right now. Let's get it done. But what we would see is that, as you know, jobs don't move the same rate through the labor market. We have some jobs that move much faster, some that move much slower. The thing that's really the measure, are we able to recruit talent? So that's what we look at, you know, primarily. Are we starting to see an increase in the rate of turnover? The answer is yes. And are we starting to see more challenging scenarios of getting, you know, qualified applicants? And the answer is yes. And we've done very well over the last couple of years while we've maintained, trying to maintain the cost of labor at an appropriate rate. We came out of 2023 at about 99% of market rate on average for the entire county. Okay, so think about that. That's over a year ago. The county was almost at market as an average. Today, total governments in the state of Utah have gone up 7.3% in, in 2024, in the, in the course of 2024. So there's a strong market, there's a strong rationale, just based upon the cost of labor increase we know about, to go at least two and a half percent. Again, two and a half percent is recommended for, well, it's recommended really because we don't want to blow the whole 5%. We want to be conservative. We want to say, hey, as we get farther down the road in 2025, we know we're going to have jobs, and we have jobs today that are way beyond 2.5% undermarket. I can say with pretty, I can say assuredly that there's no job that's going to be going over market with a 2.5% increase today. That's always my concern with cost of living. And using a cost of living approach across the board, what you will see is jobs, there's never an analysis of where that job's falling in the labor market, and you'll have jobs go over market, and we don't want that. That's a waste of money. So, you know, bottom line is, the 2.5% in my opinion, recommendation is highly warranted. I don't have to tell you, we have amazing, hard-working employees. And quite frankly, even though we're not using cost of living as a basis, employees are struggling. The economy's still, I mean, prices are still high. But again, that's not our basis. Our basis is how hard is it to get the quality talent we need? And I can't, and I'll say this, it's kind of, you know, cliche, but the saving money on not increasing wages is the worst money you could ever save. It's extremely expensive in the long run to not give appropriate raises and keep, you know, pay fair. The costs are way more than you can ever imagine when it comes to productivity, quality, the, the ability to retain talent and improve talent. It just falls apart. And some of us, well, those of you who have worked here for the county for many years know this has been the case in the past. So we definitely don't want to go back to that. So with that, I think I'll just stop. And any questions or comments?
Yeah, a question, like, what, the conversation earlier about comparing ourselves to other counties, what other tools do you use that are outside of, that's more similar to the private sector?
Oh, yeah.
I know you and I have had that conversation.
Yeah, that's, that's a very good question. So, like you mentioned, you know, for the elected officials, we do use other county elected officials as our basis, because there really is no other comparison. And we do still fall behind. This is where, I, I do not, I don't want Utah County to be the one, you know, pushing the market. I, I have the same frustration that you all do, is that if one entity moves or increases, you know, all their wages, the next entity will increase their wages, and it's a untenable scenario. So we try to be very moderate in our increases and at least follow the market and try to match the market. So to answer your question, for employees, we have an interesting mix of employees. We have, you know, public safety is the most county-centric role we have here. There only is other county sheriff's office to, you know, to compare with. But then you have, you know, IS, you have the assessor, you have appraisers, you have all these jobs that exist in the private sector. So the answer to your question is that we have a variety of sources that we use. We do use sources in, you know, the private sector. We use, of course, local cities in Utah County. We use counties in Utah. But we use these systems, one's called, you know, PayFactors, which brings in, in private data in the state of Utah. And we use another one, I'm drawing a blank. But the short answer is, is that we use a variety of, of private wage sources. And we have to, have to moderate that, because that will usually, you know, push up our rates or the recommendations. And so we weight those less, but we take those into consideration. Unless, for example, it's an IS job that only exists in Silicon Slopes. We have to really weight up the private sector, you know, data to try to make sure we're being, you know, competitive. I know of a job right now that is going to be recruited for it. It's going to be very, very difficult to fill in the IS department. It's proved to be difficult. We've gone through, we've churned through employees. Anyway, long story short, we're going to have to make an adjustment. That's the other answer I didn't fully answer. What's the, you know, purpose for the other, you know, 2.5% that we may have standby, that we may or may not spend, is to target those jobs. As we get, you know, data on the impossibility or the challenges of recruiting this key talent that we have to have, we're going to, I, I will have to come to the commission and say, these roles in this, you know, department need a grade level increase, not a market level, but a grade level increase. And this is why. And this is a perfect example, where I could see that happening. And there are these hotspots throughout the county, and we're seeing them, we're seeing them more. And again, we're, I'm never going to come to you and say, oh, this is an increase we need because of Salt Lake County. It's going to be, Salt Lake, all these other counties and private, you know, sector are increasing these rates, and we can't hire this job. It's, it's been vacant for months. We have to raise the rate. So that will be the ask, as we get farther into 2025 with, with targeted positions. So, did that answer your question?
It did. Yeah, thank you.
Sure.
I was shocked as I met with Ezra Nair earlier today, and we have a job posted that I thought was a great job, and shocked that we're not getting candidates for that position.
Yeah.
And, and left it open as a result. And it, I think it is, there is truth to what you're saying, as far as that goes. I'd be curious to hear what you two have to say about this.
I think we've worked really hard for years to reduce the amount of attrition we have. Historically, when I came into office, we had a, an attrition rate of 16%, and it cost the county nearly $5 million a year in recruitment. We've now since reduced that to 11%, which is more on par. We're retaining our good talent. And Sheriff, you can, you can attest to this. When we, it took us, what, five years working together to get it to the point that you could even recruit officers and fill positions, right? And I think if we fall behind, once again, it'll start costing us millions of dollars a year, and we'll lose good talent in the process. I really appreciate that you've taken the really conservative side of this cost of labor, instead of coming and asking us for a full 5%. I really appreciate that you've cut it in half so that you make sure that we're not bringing any of our positions above market level, and then we can target those that need higher. I appreciate that, that dual-faceted approach, because then we're ensuring that we're still good stewards of the taxpayer dollar, not bringing any of our positions over market rate, but then showing our employees that we appreciate their hard work, and we recognize them as assets rather than liabilities and that they're valuable. So I like that two-pronged approach, where we're valuing them and preventing attrition, but also not, not wasting any money.
Yeah, I will have the, the bad guy image that I, that I usually do. And I've struggled with this mightily. And my decision comes from an economic perspective. I do think that we need targeted approach, but on a principle basis, I'm not a fan of this market-based COLA, however we want to say, year after year. And, and that's kind of where we're at. So the last four years, we have done 34.9% increase on average. Amazing. Our, our people are being well taken care of, and, and I appreciate Commissioner Gardner and Gordon's efforts in the past to get us where we need to be. But I also understand the, the fiscal impact of continuing to do these year after year. I think the timing is not right for this. We did a 50%, 48% tax increase last year. Our sales tax and property tax continues to soften. The private sector continues to see layoffs. I'm not optimistic of our, of our economic conditions moving forward. And, and do our people deserve wage increases? Absolutely. I wish we could give everybody 10%. I, I totally do. But I struggle with the finances of this. And, and is that to say nobody should get anything? No, I think the targeted approach is very important. Public safety, we cannot let public safety go and, and have our streets without enforcement. That's not an option. So I think targeted and grade level, the approach of that is what I, is lean towards. And I also think we need to take a breather once in a while and say, we need a break. We, we cannot keep charging our taxpayers more and more every single year, because the private sector doesn't always get that opportunity. And, and I've had this conversation with Ralph in the past. Working for government is a far more stable situation than the private sector, and that doesn't work for every category. Like, we've, we've mentioned the sheriff, there's many police and sheriff's offices, and the competition there is way deeper than elsewhere. But we have to understand the rising costs of benefits. All of these things are going to come in the next year or two. We can't continue to absorb it with COLAs. And so, that's where I'm coming from. I, I do, I will support targeted approaches later this year with market studies, specific positions. When we have, like Commissioner Gordon mentioned, a job that he thought was good and we can't fill, I'm absolutely willing and support targeting those kind of, of situations. But I think that the financial situation that we're in this year, I don't think it's the right time.
I want to clarify that you keep using the word COLA, and this is not a COLA, and we have not voted on COLAs, and I have never voted for a COLA, and I never will vote for a COLA, and this is not a COLA.
I'll correct myself. Market-based cost of labor increase.
Thank you. There is a big difference, so.
I think when we, we've been talking about this for a while, and, and we, we were going to have it a couple of weeks ago, the conversation. And for me, as I'm thinking about it, it was after, after we decided to punt for a couple of weeks and do some more thinking. The irony of this administration building getting a fire, and then watching some of our employees work through the weekend. And I thought, okay, these are the best of the best. And then I thought, over my first two-plus years in service here, like, all of the stories that I can stack up. I mean, the very first night, I'm opening up the warming center, and Commissioner Beltran's there with me, serving, and we had, we had individuals, I won't name them by name, but they're, they're making sure we were able to open a facility, you know? And they didn't have to do that. And I can't tell you how many numerous times those individuals have been called back to the building because the lights don't work and things like that. And I know that's their job, but there's also a limit where you could let the phone ring on your nightstand, but they don't. And the, the employees here. And I would also highlight that I've been part of letting bad apples go in, in, from Utah County. And so while, you know, you do point out that there is stability here, we also, our department heads and the different individuals that lead us here, they do, they do make sure that you're not just here to see how many levels of Candy Crush you can pass a day, or watch Netflix. That's not Utah County. And so, the irony of watching Doge come through, through America, you know, and people coming up to me in the grocery store and saying, what are you doing to Doge, Utah County? You know? And it's like, I don't know where to Doge anymore. We are lean, we do more with less, and our employees really are incredible. I wish it could be more like Skylar said, I wish it could be more than 2.5%, but I completely support 2.5%.
Yeah, to your point, I ran for office in 2018 on government efficiency. And I've spent, you know, and we've spent the last six years at our county making it more efficient and more efficient, and we've won national and international awards for efficiency. Like, they're just, after amount of time, the amount of Doging you can do goes down significantly. So, but I, actually, I think that this two-pronged approach isn't exactly an example of Doge. Because instead, we could do a zero approach, and then you could do a targeted, and then you would have to do four times more work, and we'd come to the same conclusion. So voting for a 2.5% increase across the board that brings no employees above the market rate is Doge, because we're saving a ton of effort. Requiring you to do the additional work to evaluate every single position to end up with the same result in the end is literally an example of playing politics at the expense of efficiency in government, and I don't support that.
Yeah, I would actually say that it would be more expensive to go through an entire market study.
If you had to do a market study on every position in the county and come up to the same result, you'd literally be wasting taxpayer dollars for politics.
That's my opinion.
I agree. With that, I will make a motion to approve item number eight.
Okay, I'll second that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, that passes. And is there anyone from the public that would like to address the commission? Please state your name, rank, and serial number, Mr. Richard.
I have none of those. My name is Chad Richard. I own Fat Daddy's Pizzeria in downtown Provo. Many years ago, we ran a bill that would allow 18-year-olds to serve alcohol at our restaurants. And I, I told the, at the time, that there'd be a day where we wouldn't be able to get 21-year-old servers. That bill was never left, never left committee, even though it had support from both sides of the, of the aisle. That day came in 2020 when they shut us down and, and all of our servers went away. We've never, our industry has never recovered from, from COVID with, with servers, as those 21 and older servers had moved on to online jobs and other things. We were, we were inundated with 18-year-old, 19-year-old, and 20-year-old servers, which could not serve alcohol. Now, I understand that your body does not legislate alcohol, a policy in our state, but I would like to see a resolution from our county to help small businesses and small restaurants by, by allowing a resolution that would say that you are in support of having this common-sense liquor policy in place. With the Olympics coming and with other, other economic growth, where, where our county is expected to grow 177% by 2033, with much of the economic growth happening in Utah County as well, that brings an influx of people into our county. And our, our small businesses need to be able to service those people. And quite frankly, we owe our small businesses a great deal of debt for coming through COVID the way they did. And this is just another step in which we would be able to help small businesses get and retain good-quality servers for their restaurants. Thank you.
Thanks, Chad.
Have for curiosity say, how many other states have that?
Forty-nine.
Oh, forty-nine. Oh, every other state allows?
Every other state and territory, yes.
Interesting. Thank you.
And some actually have 17-year-old servers that are allowed to do so.
Thanks, Chad. Anyone else?
Thank you, Commissioner Mike Smith, Utah County Sheriff. I just wanted to thank you for giving our employees a raise. You know, I think it's important, you know, we just watched the state go through a process where they eliminated collective bargaining within the state of Utah, which, which I'm completely okay with. But I think it's ironic that, when you look at it, when you get a government entity that gets so afraid because of politics to treat their employees the right way, well, that's why you have entities like collective bargaining come about. And I don't think that's needed here in Utah County, so I'm okay with that. But at the same time, I feel it's my job to advocate for my employees at the sheriff's office, and they're phenomenal. And when we talk about the private sector, you know, the reason the private sector thrives in this area is because of phenomenal government employees that keep all of the, the infrastructure going and keep it safe. And so I, I think it's smart to, to take, to take care of them and to treat them properly. And so I just applaud you with your vote to give them this raise. I personally think they deserve more. They, they're definitely not above market. We're struggling to fill positions. We are, we always have open positions in our jail and in enforcement, and it's hard with the competition. and enforcement. And it's hard with the competition that we face to fill these seats. And I think we owe it to the residents of our county to make sure those seats are filled and that our county is safe. So thank you for your vote today to give our employees a raise.
Thank you, Sheriff. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we'll go into closed session. Thank you, everyone.